Connection to server may have been lost. Please check here.
November is always, almost here.
Get refreshing.
Okay.
Next week we have New Horizons.
Yes. Oh, the meeting?
It's on the 26th, isn't it? The 26th.
Let me just check.
Twenty, the 26th. It's, it's one of those days. I think so. There's one scheduled, I think, next week. Isn't it next week?
Wednesday, yep. Wednesday, 26th at 5:30.
Are you happy, your son? Bittersweet. You're supposed to say bittersweet.
So I'm, I'm not going to be in December, so we can't choose somebody else to go, right? I did get that impression.
Well, let me reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. I want to welcome everybody to this meeting. Thanks for coming out, and I know we've got a number of speakers this evening, and looking forward to hearing your comments as well. Can I clear off my screen here so I can see what I need to be doing? Let's see. All right. If I can have a member, we're going to go, it looks like we're going right into our public hearing for capital improvement plan. Should we reconvene the meeting with closed session first? Do we do that later?
You do that after the public hearing.
Do that after? Okay.
There's no cards then.
All right. Mr. Vice Chair, do you have any instructions for us for the public hearing? Yes, sir.
Yeah. At this time, citizens are invited to address the board with respect to the proposed 2024 capital improvements plan. Citizens desiring to speak about this have submitted speaker cards to the clerk. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state your name, and direct your comments to the chair of the board. It's the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked not to engage in applauding verbal outburst or any other type of demonstration during the presentations. Personal matters are not considered.
Dr. Beers, I think they're having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry?
They're having trouble hearing you.
Oh, you do? Okay. That better? All right. Sorry. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and 30 seconds to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limit. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. And if you have brought written comments with you, please give those to the, to our clerk after you have finished. Your, your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
And I think we're looking for blue cards for the public comment, right? Any blue cards, Mr. Dr. Beers?
No, I don't have any blue cards.
Well, thanks for listening to the instructions. All right. So we're, the, the meeting is reconvened, and with that, if I can have a member certify closed session?
I certify that, to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And if I can have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion on the agenda? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young. Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And I have asked Mr. Baker if he would come up to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, we're moving on to item 5.1. This is going to be our announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. October is bullying prevention month, and tomorrow is Unity Day. We ask you to join us in wearing orange tomorrow to show that we stand together against bullying as a school community, and I'm sure you'll notice there is an array of orange at the podium this evening. At our last meeting on October 4th, we launched a discussion of changing school tiers and start times. We shared information, research, and a very preliminary outline of what a shift in tier and start times could look like for us as a school division. The shift in tiers to align with research on adolescents' sleep needs is a subject the board has been interested in for some time and was scheduled for discussion before the pandemic. Last week, the board voiced their support of exploring this idea further. Later this evening, Mr. Keever and Ms. Wall will share an overview of the feedback we received, continued meetings that are taking place, research underway, and additional potential scenarios for shifting tiers and start times. I want to say thank you very much indeed for the, taking the opportunity to comment on the idea of making a change. We received 1,177 responses to our initial feedback form, and we have read them all. We appreciate the thoughtfulness of those who responded with both support and with concerns and with suggestions. The number of respondents so far reflects about 10% of our WJCC community, families, and staff. Tonight, we will discuss this more, including the optimal timing of such a major change if it were to take place. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there any board members that have a report? Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, I'll just mention that the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee met yesterday. It's the first for this school year, and there's several new members from our community on that committee. There's a robust plan for the year with, with ambitious goals and lots of exciting events and opportunities for our 6th through 12th graders in the field of, you know, in CTE classes, and I think it's going to be really exciting. They're going to build on a lot of things that started last year and have been, and some have been in the works for several years that were postponed because of COVID. But I would encourage students 6th through 12th and their families to, to make sure you look into CTE courses and the different opportunities that our school division does offer, because there's a lot of exciting stuff out there, so just want to mention that.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Ms. Hunley?
So the special ed advisory committee also met last week with our new members. We had 20 out of 21 present, so we're going to have to look for another space because we, we really outgrew ourselves. Some of the things we discussed, if you might notice, in schools, there are communication boards for children that, with, with pictures to help them communicate. Well, they're now adding all those communication boards to the parks, our local parks, so just be on the lookout for that. Also, on Saturday, October 29th, they're having a disability awareness sensory trick-or-treat, and it'll be down by James River at that Abram Frick Jr. Community Center. It's from 9:00 to 12:00. Also, some robust things on our list, we're looking at bylaws, offering several trainings by the Virginia Department of Education, getting some new materials in our library for our children with special needs, also encouraging all teachers and special ed teachers to fill out the WJCC grant foundation applications. And the last thing is we're working on the JLRK report. That stands for Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee, and they will be bringing that to the board later on this year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Any other reports? Not seeing any? All right. Thank you all. Let's move on to item 6.1, our students and staff recognitions, and I think we do have one. Dr. Beers, I hand it over to you.
Yes, yes, we do. Tonight, we are excited to recognize the work of our finance team. Joining us is Mrs. Renee Ewing, WJCC Schools Chief Financial Officer. Will Mrs. Ewing please come forward? Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to Williamsburg James City County Schools for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2021. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So, thank, thank you, Mrs. Ewing, and congratulations again. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our recognitions for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. And Ms. Ewing, thank you again for your outstanding work. It seems like it's every four to six months, she, we're recognizing all of your hard work and that of your staff, but it doesn't, it's well deserved is what I'm trying to say, so thank you. We're going to move on to item 7.1, which is going to be our public comments section, and bear with us as we do provide the instructions again. Dr. Beers?
Okay. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked not to engage in applauding verbal outburst or any other type of demonstration during the presentation. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board may not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated a minute and 30 seconds to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limit. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker, and if you have brought written comments with you, please give those to our clerk at the conclusion of your presentation. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Beers? Who do we have?
Okay. Andrew Kason.
Good evening. I'm here to speak about educator compensation. We are at a crisis brought about by a deeply dysfunctional status quo. For too long has this district delivered above-average results for below-average pay. How is it that a school district that often appears in the top 10 rankings in the state fails to, fails miserably to compensate educators? The WJCC average teacher salary is more than 10% below the state average. How does this, how does a community as wealthy and as educated as ours fail to fairly compensate their educators? This has gone on far too long, and it's sad that it will take teachers leaving the profession in droves before any meaningful action is taken. We need fair and equitable compensation, please, because we have been making up this discrepancy between the input and the results, right? We've been paying with it, with our time and, quite frankly, our sanity. The effects of this can clearly be seen. Look at the personnel actions on your agenda every single time. We are slowly dripping, it's, it's, it's like draining. A teacher is leaving. Lafayette has lost another special ed teacher. I don't have a licensed special ed teacher for my inclusion classroom. The sub is great, but what I need is a professional, and if we're not attracting those professionals, then we're failing, and we're failing our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kason.
Our next speaker is Cara McLean.
Good evening. I'm speaking again about the family life curriculum for the kindergarten through 12th grade. The opt-out forms were given this year, but there is still no information in the library for any parent to see, to see if they would want their child to be opted out of this class, because the revision has not yet been finished, which will not probably be finished until March. My son's 10th grade teacher told me that she was waiting on this revision, so she had nothing to tell me about what his class would entail in January, but if the information was not available in time, that she would use approved websites, but she would not use the approved book, which is abstinence-based. This was concerning to me because I was told in the 9th grade class last year that the information was approved, and it was very sexually explicit lesson plans that I saw, and I have copies of if anyone wants to see them. And this is inappropriate, first of all, as this is says by Virginia codes and guidelines that it is an abstinence-based thing, curriculum. And also, I'm just asking that this be put on hold because the guidelines of Williamsburg and of Virginia say that this has to be in the library, and since it is not and parents cannot check to see if they want to opt out that this class is, which is a two-week class either in January or May for the high school, I'm not sure where it is for the other classes, should be put on hold because this is something for the, that will affect the children's minds.
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
Robin Pavloski.
Tonight, I'm speaking on a subject that I hope the board and all parents with children in the public school system will hear. This is a plea for parents to take the time to look at all the information your student is subjected to. There is a lot of information that is put on children's laptops and online that parents need to look at, and some of these terms parents may not understand, so do the research to understand it. No longer can parents keep their heads in the sand and hope that what a student learns in the school system is helpful. There are times when it's not. According to our governor, parents have the right to know what their children are learning and to be partners in the education of their children. So if you do find something objectionable, talk to your teachers, your principals, and your school board members. That's what they're there for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pavloski.
Michael Hassan.
Good evening. As an update to my remarks from the last board meeting regarding the improper flag in the history classroom, I would like to advise you that the day after the meeting that this flag was taken down. I want to thank the individual or individuals who assisted with this issue, as you have made it possible for students to receive an education free from inappropriate influence and giving them the respect and empathy they deserve. On a different subject, one of our, one of your policies states that the school attendance is critical to academic achievement and preparing students for the world of work and personal success. Stating that, please explain how students were excused to walk out of class last month. Your student code of conduct states that students may be disciplined for conduct that interferes with the educational process. If school attendance is critical in conduct that interferes with the educational process caused for discipline, how many students were disciplined for this? Over half of my child's class walked out. Are you going to say that that's not an interference to her education? Why should children who didn't participate lose their rights in education? Because I can tell you that teacher did not continue teaching. And how can this school system endorse such an event? While at least two principals said it wasn't officially endorsed, they knew about it, refused to stop it, and so by, by their own inactions, they endorsed it. Students are in school to learn math, reading, science, not to protest. If students want to protest, they can do it on their own time, not the schools. They can do it before or after school, not during the school day, which adversely disrupts school for those not participating in the walkout. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hossain.
Chandra Dunn.
Hello, my name is Chandra Dunn, and I wanted to first apologize. I intended to attend the last meeting, but I was unable to because of time constraints, and that's exactly what I want to talk about today. What I'm going to do is, as I said before, I do want to submit something in writing to the board to share some concerns that have been shared with me from other teachers, and I, I, I don't want it to come off as being negative, because I think there's a lot of negativity, and that is not my purpose at all. I just want to share concerns that teachers have. One of the things that I do want to mention, the two reasons that a lot of teachers don't come to the board meetings, from what I've heard, is because of time. They just don't have the time to do it because, you know, we're working late. I came directly from Berkeley here, and I go to work, I, I check in at about 7:00 a.m. each morning. The other thing is fear of retribution. I'm not really sure where that comes from, but those are two things that I would really like for us to take a look at. I will tell you one unintended consequence of the teacher shortage also that I realized today. I am spending so much time working with the new teachers in our building because of the turnover. It never dawned on me until today, when I was on my way trying to type up what I wanted to say. I'll share those in the email.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
Break, guys? Break, Dryce?
Okay. There's been a lot I've been hearing about in the news about indoctrination of students in the school systems. I want to share two personal points regarding the consequences of gender identity indoctrination. My daughter is a PhD candidate at Duquesne University in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. She's also working as a clinical mental health counselor. She told me a few months ago, when I shared item 2 with her, which I'll talk to you about, that over 50% of the children she sees, she focuses on middle school students and high school students in her client base, over 50% of those students are reporting confliction, all kinds of issues with their gender identity, all from things that they are getting from school. My second point, my wife has two young second cousins. One of them, two years ago, at the age of 17, decided to try to kill himself. He took a bottle of Tylenol, put it in his mouth, and washed it down with Clorox. Can you imagine doing that? It's amazing to me that he even survived. His reason for doing so was because he said he couldn't be who he wanted to be, that is, a girl. This is what he's getting in school. His sister is also going back and forth, male and female, who she's dating.
Thank you, Mr. Dryce. Thank you, sir.
Tanya Whitaker.
Hello. All right, so I know you guys have some things that you wanted to discuss. I wanted to point out as far as the school starting time that you're going to talk about later, we'll need to do a, like, emergency rezoning to basically just redo the whole zoning. That was an issue back in 2015, I guess it was. There's only one member here that was attended at that time, and back at that day, they had many, many schools, was drivers came up and said it was a bad idea, and they basically predicted what would happen. That's how that happened, so I would probably suggest looking at that. As far as the shrink thing, or I'm sorry, the school psychology week, I guess we have school couns, or school psychologists now, or I don't know if you guys can share more about like how many school couns, or school psychologists in each school. Is the parent also going to? Is the parent also going to be involved in this? Because I don't want, you know, a shrink talking to my daughter, and I don't know nothing about it. And then also, and I will give this to you, I had a little interesting find and something that you had pulled up with some questions, and I would like to also discuss that later, probably in an email again. As far as our kids go, the, the whole LGBTQ thing, I don't, I'm done hearing about it. Enough is enough. Our kids do not need to learn anything sex-related from our school, and they don't need to be talking to other adults about sex-related content.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker.
Reality is that throughout our country, in every school system, there are those who are determined to weaken America. Education is presently at the forefront. Racializing and hyper-sexualizing our children and identifying parents as domestic terrorists. Incorporating CRT, social-emotional learning, intersectionality, diversity and inclusion, reverse discrimination, segregation, whatever the code word, it is simply immoral. Those who support such programs in our school system are complicit in a racist and sexual goal. How much money are we spending on diversity inclusion? How many employees are being paid to stress this ideology? How many times are teachers being trained in the false and harmful ideology? Take that money and spend it on eliminating the two-year academic loss experienced by forced shutdown. Educate our children in the skills they need to meet their individual potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eastman.
Excuse us, our next speaker is Marco Sardi.
We'll give you more time than that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. I'm Marco Sardi, Vice President of WJCEA and a teacher here at James Blair. I spoke on a personal note last month addressing my concerns over the changes to the 2022 model policies, specifically as it relates to the changes in using nicknames and pronouns with students in class. Given the deadline for the feedback is eight days from today, and there has not been, to my knowledge, a decision on whether the division will adopt those changes, I wanted to bring a few details into focus to properly advocate for my students. The recommended policy language differentiates between certain nicknames and pronouns. This will directly affect my trans students. I would be legally required to out those students to their parents even when they have expressed that I not do so. How can we prepare our students to stand up for their beliefs if others decide it does not matter when they have taken the courage to do so? This will change how those students are treated in our schools, while the policy itself calls itself a policy of privacy, dignity, and respect. I will remind the board also of a recent report by the American Association of Pediatrics, which has found that trans students are 22% more likely to plan suicide and twice as likely to be hospitalized following one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sardi.
Good evening, Chairman Dow, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Allyn Parm, President of WJCEA and a teacher in WJCC. Today I ask you, why do you think there is a teacher and substitute shortage? Why do you think instructional staff and instructional assistants in the classrooms are burnt out? The daily class coverage has been draining on staff in WJCC, causing morale to be low. Elementary teachers are to split classrooms, instructional aides are walking into work not knowing if they're working with their students or covering teachers' classes. Secondary teachers are giving up their planning to cover class, putting their own lesson planning for their students in jeopardy, and covering other class off times during their current class period without adequate pay. If WJCC staff aren't giving adequate needs to thrive in the education profession, then how can we help our students? For the proposed 2023-2024 school tier, we encourage you to look into suggesting this proposal for 2024-2025. Our community needs time to adjust to this, and our division needs to analyze if we are equipped with adequate transportation, especially since we are in great need of drivers. As our school board, again, I ask that you discuss and collaborate with our school division leaders so that we can reach our goals. If we want to continue to be a premier school with premier testing scores, then our staff needs to be given premier resources and salary, reflecting that as well. As our school board leaders, I do thank you for your hard work and for representing us in these meetings and our joint sessions, and I do look forward to sharing our thoughts with you next month and with our funding partners. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Adeline McKnight.
Hello, my name is Adeline McKnight. I'm a sophomore at Jamestown High School. Governor Youngkin's model policies are based on the ideal of parental right. This works if every family is safe and loving. However, we all know that some students live in homes that are unsafe. Governor Youngkin's policies will endanger students in each school in our district. When I learned about the bill that Governor Youngkin proposed, I was concerned for the well-being of my fellow students. Governor Youngkin's policy states, "School shall defer to parents to make the best decision with respect to their children," including whether their child engages in any counseling. While this currently focuses on gender identity, the warning could easily make it possible for parents to prevent students receiving counseling for abuse or other, or other areas that endanger them. According to the CDC, 36.7 students reported feelings of sadness or hopelessness in the past year. This percentage is higher with LGBTQ students, at 66.3%. 18.8% of high school students have seriously considered suicide in the past year. This is higher, again, with LGBTQ students, at 46.8%. This bill could prevent these students from receiving life-saving counseling. According to ChildHelp.org, over six, or over 4.6 million children are reported as abused each year in the United States. This would pack 10 modern football stadiums. LGBTQ students are even more vulnerable. I consider, I ask you to consider what I have said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKnight. That was it, Dr. Beers?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you everyone for coming out and lending your voice to this meeting, and we do take it to heart everything that we've heard and received. I want to move on to item eight, our consent agenda. Bear with me as I do a bit of reading here. Be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Item 8.1, approval of financial report and monthly bills and payroll for September 2022. Approval of minutes from September 20th, 2022 meeting. Approval of minutes from October 4th, 2022. And item 8.4, approval of resolution R18-22 National School Psychology Week. Item 8.5, approval of revisions to policy JHCC GBEC, which is communicable diseases. Item 8.6, approval of revisions to policy JHCD, administering medication to students. 8.7, approval of policy JHCE, recommendation of medication by school personnel. 8.8, approval of retirement to policy IHG, independent study. 8.9, approval of revisions to policy IGBB, programs for gifted students. And item 8.10, 8.10, approval of revisions to policy IKD, honor rolls. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. I was looking at you first. Thank you. Get you next time, Ms. Hummel. Any discussion? No? All right. Ms. Holler.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you. We'll move on to item nine, our action items for this evening. First, if I can have a motion to approve the personnel actions this evening.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. And Ms. Holler.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And item 9.2, approval of change order for purchase order 2022-0982 Berkeley Middle School Cooling Tower Replacement, if I can have a motion there, which might include the cost. Please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the change order for PO number 2022-092 Berkeley Middle School Cooling Tower Replacement to Vertexco in the amount of $257,082.58.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? Just as we recall, this is one of those must-do items. The thing just failed, and, and I think we're attaching it to another piece of work that's going on at Berkeley as well in the, in the same area. So having no other discussion on this item. Ms. Holler.
Mrs. Ortega.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you. Move on to our discussion item for the evening, our planning for school year 23-24 school tier start times, which is, at this point, is just been a discussion, a lot of research. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we're going to continue our discussion on exploration of the possibility of changing tier times and start times sometime in the future, next year or the year beyond, and Mr. Kiefer's going to lead us off this afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, members of the school board. Pleased to be with you this evening to provide an update on some information that we initially shared with the board on October 4th of 2022. During that conversation on the 4th with the board, we provided information related to a TransFinder study that had occurred in the spring of 2021 and some potential shifts that could be made. We also shared with the board things that we did as a school division administratively to take into consideration the suggestions for the 22-23 school year and potentially planning beyond. We shared financial implications of continuing to utilize contracted services and provided the board with some initial research on adolescent sleep and school start times. At the conclusion of that conversation on the 4th, we did share with the board a potential time and tier structure that would shift the school day for students across the division. We shared a tiering structure that would place elementary in the first two tiers, that would place high school in the third tier, and then middle school in the fourth tier. At the conclusion of the presentation that evening, we did share information with the entire WJCC public related to the potentiality for shifting tiers, provided a form for feedback, and also stood up a website to provide additional information around transportation, around sleep research, et cetera. The purpose of the presentation this evening is to review that feedback, to outline the work that has taken place and that is underway, and to discuss potential next steps. I need to continue to talk before I give it to Ms. Wall. Sorry, Cara. We are going to provide for you some of the key themes that emerged with the feedback that was offered to administration, also address some of the potential misconceptions in that data, and then provide a high-level view of what the numbers told us. Want to give you perspective on the research and meetings that have continued in light of the board's initial support for continuing the conversation, and then finally talk about some additional considerations with respect to potential tiering times and potential implementation. Ms. Wall?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. I first want to thank our community for their interest and active engagement in this dialogue. As of yesterday afternoon, what Dr. Heron shared earlier, we have received 1,177 initial responses to that feedback form. We read every submission and catalogued each piece of feedback into one of three categories, that of support, that of concern, and those with further questions, alternate ideas, or which express neutrality. Within the pool of support, common themes cited were the importance of following research. As shared last meeting by, by Mr. Kiefer, research shows that it's not, that younger children need less sleep, but rather physiologically, younger children are able to fall asleep earlier in the night than adolescents. A shift in start times would align with students' circadian rhythms. Because of those documented sleep patterns, respondents also noted that the shift in tiers would capitalize on and better align academic instruction with students' naturally alert patterns. And finally, respondents commented that moving elementary start times earlier in the day may eliminate the need for morning childcare. So rather than coordinating childcare two times in the morning and in the afternoon, it could be consolidated until the afternoon only. Within the pool of concerns, common themes cited were challenges with childcare, and that's two-pronged. One was where middle school or high school siblings who provide childcare for younger siblings would be unavailable with later dismissal time. And two, where secondary students may now need childcare or supervision because of their later start time. Respondents expressed concern about the impact such a shift would have on secondary students' opportunities outside of the school day, be that sports, extracurriculars, or jobs. And then finally, some students felt that the tier-one elementary school start time was too early and the tier-four dismissal time was too late. Before moving into the specific data, we want to first clarify a few misunderstandings or disconnects that presented themselves in the feedback. First, implementation of any adjustment to tier and start times is not for the current school year that's already underway. Next, consolidating all schools at all levels to the same start and end time is unfortunately not possible. While we appreciate that idea that some individuals had expressed, the concept would mean that all of our routes would be running concurrently, and that would require significantly more drivers than we currently have. Likewise, as Mr. Kiefer shared last meeting, consolidating all elementary schools to one tier would require an additional 24 to 26 drivers. We would not do away with middle school athletics. As was shared last meeting, a shift like this would not, we would not be diminishing opportunities for students. And finally, we'll continue efforts to recruit more drivers to join our transportation team. Over the course of the last school year, though, just for a little bit of context, we did hire 22 new drivers. Meanwhile, 10 left the organization in the same time period. And, Mr. Chair, if you'll indulge a brief PSA, anyone who's listening, who's interested in joining our transportation team, is encouraged to visit our website and submit an application.
We always encourage that PSA, by the way. Thank you.
We cover the cost of CDL licensing, and we do offer a bonus to new transportation hires as well, so please visit our website. Now moving into the specific data, as was mentioned, we received 1,177 pieces of initial feedback. As I said, the responses were grouped into one of three categories, and what you're seeing here is a breakdown of the responses by support, concern, or question, alternate option, or neutrality. I'll note that this process of categorization was more of an art than a science. The initial feedback form offered one open-ended response space for respondents to share their initial thoughts. It was not a binary question of asking the respondent if they supported the initial consideration or if they had concerns. In the following two slides, we'll share data broken down by role and grade level affiliation. And I'll note that respondents weren't limited in their roles or affiliations that they could select. So take, for example, a third-grade parent who is also a high school teacher, they would select parent, teacher, elementary school, and high school, but we can't say with certainty how the role and level correspond with one another. In this slide, you're looking at responses by role. Please remember that if a respondent selected multiple roles, for example, being a parent and a staff member, they are reported within both groups. Respondents self-reported their affiliations, and through this style of feedback form, we don't have a mechanism to verify that authenticity. And here, you're looking at responses by grade level affiliation, and just like with the last slide, if the respondent selected multiple levels, they're reported with each selected group. Thank you, and I'll hand it back over to Mr. Kiefer.
As a result of the conversation with the board in early October, and some of the comments that emerged through the feedback process, we did engage with a meeting with our As a result of the conversation with the board in early October and some of the comments that emerged through the feedback process, we did engage with a meeting with our Rec Connect team through James City County to learn some additional information. For the board's knowledge, currently, Rec Connect is averaging about three hundred and twenty-eight students in their morning care program and somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and twenty-six students in their afternoon program. That's an average that's broken out over the eight particular sites, but just wanted to give you that piece of information. In addition, our friends at the W I S C are currently providing childcare for a hundred and sixty students. That total does also, I believe, include a school in York County in terms of the childcare provided there. We bring this up because we know that it's a concern. We know that both Rec Connect and the W I S C have had some challenges relative to staffing in terms of childcare. But I can tell you through the conversation that I had with the Rec Connect team, they are interested in the decision that the school division makes because they recognize that if there were to be a change in the tier system, they would need to reconsider the model that they provide. Would they need fewer staff members in the morning and more in the afternoon? Or how might that balance out? There's a need to be a look for potential preschool care for middle school. So there are there are some scenarios that would need to be logistically considered, and I got the sense from that meeting that that they're ready to do what it takes within the staffing ramifications and and challenges that they have. Additionally, there has been and there were concerns relative to athletics. In initial conversations with our Health and Physical Education Coordinator, who has been conversing with athletic directors at both the middle school and high school level, I think each level has a unique concern. At the middle school level, we compete versus other middle schools in the Bay Rivers District, generally dependent upon season. There are specific start times for those activities. And we would need to work logistically with those other schools and within the district to reconfigure our start and end times for athletics. Not insurmountable, but a logistic challenge that would need to be worked through. Similarly, the high school level, we compete within the Bay Rivers District and then, of course, also compete regionally as well. I think that no matter what the scenario provides, we have committed to not looking to diminish opportunities for students to be involved in their school and would work to mitigate any of those potential challenges. It does take communication. It does take collaboration, and but we're prepared to do that and work with folks in order to get that accomplished. At the same time, the fine arts and performing arts, we don't believe that there will be any type of negative impact there. It it might take additional communication and collaboration in terms of after-school practices, lights for the marching band potentially to practice, et cetera, but that's not an insurmountable scenario. Transportation continues to refine route possibilities, looking at how tight and compact can the routes become in order to shorten the time between tiers. That is an ongoing process. With every day, I have an additional conversation with transportation about how to continue to refine. There are some additional tiering options that I'm going to share with you in just a couple of minutes to just to share with you what some additional potentials are. But as we are talking about this and looking at the volume of change, I think it's also worth considering, is this a potential implementation in the twenty-four, twenty-five year? To provide an ample on-ramp for folks to be able to modify schedules and be prepared for a change of this magnitude. So as an example, this was the structure that we shared with you when we last got together, a seven twenty-five tier-one elementary start and a nine thirty A M. Tier four, middle school. The amount of time between tiers that you see here is is pretty close to what we need. We need somewhere in the neighborhood of forty to forty-five minutes between our current tiers in order to deliver students to school on time and to get them home on time in the afternoon. Any tighter that we make that, the harder it is for us to be able to deliver students on time and get them home on time. And if we have a challenge getting them home on time in the afternoon, what you'll find is that students are at school waiting for a bus to arrive. Because if it takes us longer to get you home in the afternoon, it takes us longer to get to the next school to pick up. Here is another potential option. We heard feedback that seven twenty-five was too early for the elementary tier. Well, there's a potential modification where we look at an elementary tier starting at seven forty A M. What does that do to the rest of the tiering scenarios? It makes everything later. Potentially, this might help solve some of the concerns that were brought forward. At the same time, we did hear concerns from members of the middle school community that the time that we put out initially felt like it was too late for them. This actually creates a later middle school start and a later middle school conclusion. Still a possible solution. And then finally, there was some feedback that, you know, middle school ought to be earlier than high school. Here's another opportunity, another iteration of the schedule, which just transposes the the middle schools and high schools in terms of time. This particular item that I'm sharing with you does provide additional logistic challenges for us relative to bus routes and transportation. We will look at this scenario as a possibility, but we do believe this routing structure will be more complicated with respect to the total number of drivers that will be needed in order to get us to this point. I shared the, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Dowell.
I apologize. Are we certain that what I'm looking at as far as tier structure number three is different than what was presented two weeks ago?
Yeah, it is.
It is because middle school and high school are changed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So it's the same start time.
I was just looking at the times. Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So it flip-flops middle school and high school. And in another iteration of this, I could give you a fourth and simply start elementary one at seven forty and push everything later with high school starting nearly at nine forty-five and getting out at at four twenty-five or so. I didn't put that on here, but it's illustrative purposes. So as we continue to explore this and refine this, I I think it's worthy of the board asking some additional questions. We do intend to look at a specific additional feedback opportunity for members of our community where we can provide some options and get a sense of comfort level around options. And we hope to be able to have that in place within the next week or two so that we can then get back to the board with some of those additional feedback pieces. So part of the next step for us this evening might be to talk about what other pieces of information would the board really need to have in order to feel like the voices have been heard.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. Before I open it up to comments or questions from the board, for you, I want to just kind of say thank you. This is exactly, from my perspective anyway, this is exactly what the board asked for when two weeks ago, we took our finger off of the pause button and said, go back to work and figure out what questions need to be answered to those things that those kind of next-tier, next-step questions and considerations. And really appreciate the fact that eleven, more than eleven hundred, community members, parents, or even students participated in that survey. And I thank you, Dr. Heron, for your leadership and making sure that those stakeholders had a voice in this process as well. So I appreciate that what we've asked for, that's what we've received, the good, the bad, and the ugly here to discuss it. Any questions or comments from the board? Young.
Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Kiefer. And I don't know your name.
Ms. Wall.
Ms. Wall.
Ms. Wall. Okay. As I read through those comments, two things really struck me. Number one was that early start time for elementary school. Seven twenty-five, that I do have to say that that really bothers me as a as a person, not, and kids are out, true, but we're talking about getting staff there. And that means that, and one of their comments talked about they're already traveling forty minutes in the morning to get to work on time, and that means a much earlier time for them to get up and get going. I think one of the things that, and I do understand about the twenty-four best drivers, I've asked you that last time. I just read the comment again tonight. But I'm wondering if we somehow, I mean, maybe transportation probably needs to weigh in a little bit more on how many bus routes are we talking about, for example, for each of those tiers? How many best drivers are we we currently needing at those times? Because I I think for me, that would give me a much clearer understanding of the problem. I do know that best drivers, that's a very difficult job. And but I would like more information about exactly how many routes we're talking about. I think that would help me get a much clearer picture of what what we're dealing with as a school board.
And we can get some additional information for you on that and be very granular with respect to the number of the number of routes that are currently being utilized based on the tiers that we have in place. And we can also project the number of routes with with potential tier times. But just as an example, currently, looking at a seven twenty-five start at the elementary level, we project needing sixty-six routes in the morning. We have fifty-seven drivers. So right there off the bat, you're thinking, well, that's a nine, nine route or nine-driver deficit. And so part of the art in terms of putting this together is knowing which routes can go first or second and third in order to cover the routes necessary based on the time of the route and the distance of the route. So we can get particularly granular with you. However, we always will want and need additional drivers to cover routes. We we want and need that now. It'll allow us to be more efficient in the current scenario that we're utilizing. And we do believe that in in shifting the tiers for elementary earlier than secondary, it allows us to be more efficient with the routing because the routes are shorter at the elementary level than they are at the middle school and high school level. So we'll come back around to you in the in the next meeting or two and try to provide some really detailed look at the number of routes and and drivers that are driving at each of the individual tiers.
Right. Can you also, Mr. Kiefer, would you also, I I would like some information about how many staff members we're talking about it? I'm at that, I'm sure we're talking about more than sixty-six.
I mean, how many drivers?
No, how many staff members we're talking about that early tier for elementary school?
It would, sure, we could, we could break that down for you, but it, right now, just by comparison, we have three high schools and high school teachers arrive to school at probably six forty-five, six fifty in order to start classes at seven twenty. So I can break down for you the number of teachers we have, elementary, middle, and high, if that would be helpful. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, I think so, but I, especially that tier, that first tier.
Sure. We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to echo your thanks to everyone who participated and and added comments. In fact, you know, it's a very large number, and I'm grateful to have that feedback. I was pleasantly surprised that it was, I thought it would overwhelmingly be negative, and it wasn't. It was, it was closer to fifty-fifty. And, yeah, but it's certainly not representative of a hundred percent of our population. And so I am, I am curious what everyone thinks, and I don't know if there's a way to to get at that or not. Or not, Mr. Kiefer, you asked what information the board would need. I think, you know, maybe an opportunity, particularly if there's a a large lead time, to do, instead of, hey, we're open to information, maybe do a little bit more outreach and 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 getting into the community to to try to solicit more information. I am absolutely in support of starting elementary school earlier and high school later. It's, we know it's best for kids and 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 we're compelled, I think, to do. No matter how hard change is, I think we're compelled to do what is best for kids. And I I think the timing isn't great to do it next school year. I think your instinct to give a little bit more warning is probably wise. But I think what I am struck by with this process is that when we have the ability to do what is best for kids because we have the resources to do so, we should. But our ability to do that in this situation is is a little bit hampered. Having four tiers is not ideal. Three tiers, two tiers would be best. Three tiers would be better. Four tiers is, that's a struggle. It's a huge, it's a huge gap. And and I think about the location of our schools, which we have no agency over. They are where they are, but they're not an ideal situation, locations. Ideally, every student would go to their closest school, and we don't put schools where people are, and so it requires that our our routes are longer than they probably should be or that they are in other communities. We have a long, skinny school division. That makes transportation hard. Our built environment is not built on a grid. It's cul-de-sac. Again, that makes transportation hard. So there's so much that we don't have agency over. Unlike, you know, our neighboring school division where there's a York Elementary, a York Middle, and a York High, where everybody sort of has the same attendance zone, that makes transportation sort of easier to deliver, whereas we have multiple kids going to different elementary, middle, high. And so someone earlier in public comment mentioned attendance zones. And I wonder, as we look at our C I P and the intersection of new space coming onboard, whether there's an opportunity when new high school space comes, when new elementary school space frees up because of additional educational space coming onboard, whether there's an opportunity to establish attendance zones that are more favorable to transportation. Because right now, our attendance zones are odd. You know, we have, you know, kids who live on Long Hill Road being bused to Brickback Road for elementary school, right? And that's just not efficient. And and so the number of routes would stay the same, I presume, but the length of those routes would probably diminish. And so anyway, that's just a an observation that I think when we're trying to do what's best for kids, can can where we have control, you know, we have control where our schools are located, or the shape of our county or our built environment, but we do have control over our attendance zones. And can we construct those in a way that's more effective for transportation so that we're able to condense these tiers and maybe even realize three tiers? So, Dr. Heron, you're looking at me?
I was just going to maybe suggest that Ms. Wall could speak a little bit to how we could take a next step to get more specific feedback and push further into the community to have a response to to what we're thinking about and what that would look like and how we would try to reach out to to more people. But I do want to comment on, I mean, our our biggest hammering factor right now is a lack of resources to give tiers that make sense.
Right.
Because seven twenty-five is too early. And once we move that later, we move everybody. And and so to be able to have the resources to have to start at eight o'clock or beyond for elementary school would be ideal. We're not in that position right now, so that is a huge hammering factor.
Right. I I just, you know, particularly at the elementary school level, where there's just a higher volume of kids, I would just say that when the school board looks at redoing attendance zones, I think transportation route should be a significant factor in consideration. And that has historically not been the case, and I think it's because historically it hasn't been an issue, but now it is. And so I just think that's something that should be considered in the future.
Thank you. With regard to the next iteration of collecting feedback, I think that there's a few things to consider. Before the last school board meeting had even adjourned, we went live with the website and the initial feedback form. And I may have remarked to a few of you that we had already received several dozen before we had adjourned last time. So we agree that the eleven hundred plus is a good number, but it is not comprehensive of our entire community. Part of that consideration will be the amount of time we want to have the next iteration open. If we're looking for a two-week turnaround for our next school board meeting, we'll hit the ground running with making sure that we're using other avenues like using this, our teachers, using our staff members, the individuals who have made connections with our families more directly, to have them encourage families to complete the feedback form versus a a message that's just at the at the division level where a parent or family member might not have a direct connection with this generic account. So looking at that targeting and making sure that we're getting representative responses across geographic and level groupings.
And by family and staff.
And even students.
And students.
Thank you. Ms. Ordigo, and then Ms. Hunley.
Yeah, I just want to echo my colleagues' comments and commend commend the division for creating an efficient way of collecting the feedback they've collected so far and commend everyone who took the time to. and commend everyone who took the time to, to share the feedback because that's what we, that's what we need. We want a community conversation. We, it, it proves that our community is watching and listening and participating and willing to engage. And I think that's, that's sign of a, of a healthy community. I didn't, I have not yet been able to get through all eleven hundred. I think we just got access to them yesterday. But in, in reading both the pros and the cons and the questions, I could empathize with, with each one. So people have very valid concerns. They have valid issues for their families and their particular needs. And, and so that's, that's always pulls at the heartstrings because everyone has valid concerns and sometimes they conflict. In terms of what, what more we need to find out and, and be able to provide, I think, I think it's good that we're starting the conversation now, but I do think this is going to be a, a longer conversation and something that's going to take time to ease into and to prepare the community in a number of ways, including, like we said, some partnerships with before and after school care, safety sidewalks and crosswalks and being able to really plan communities around schools that, that would make non-transportation zones feasible and safe and not just dump that on, on people. So this would, I think it really will take strategic planning with our funding partners, with, with the community at large, with, with a number of private and public partnerships perhaps. And I think this is a bigger project. And if we are going to, in the near future, have a discussion about redistricting, I do think this, that needs, this needs to be a comprehensive plan, which, which, you know, that sounds overwhelming. But I think doing, doing this first and then potentially reshuffling schools and, and I, I just think it would put a lot of people in turmoil for some time. So I guess that was more comment than question, but I, I do think that the, having certain benchmarks versus a timeline, I think we have to achieve certain benchmarks that will make this feasible for families in different situations before we can set a time that we would implement this.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Hundley?
Just echoing what my board members said, the only thing I'd like to add is definitely I would like to see a more intense conversation with our people that are going to be offering the childcare. For example, showing them some of those scenarios or, and saying, you know, what would it take to do this? And just pretend we're in this situation and have them give the feedback because I really feel that's going to be the deal breaker is childcare. And, but I'm definitely in support of the tier change. I like that we don't have to rush into it, that it need, we need to take time looking at all the scenarios. The thing with sports, I just, in my mind, and I know this is probably silly, but I think, you know, high schools and even, if you're watching football games for colleges and even pro, some games are at one thirty, some are at four, some are at eight. I just think that other school divisions would say, hey, we're playing Williamsburg. We have to play them at, you know, at a different time because of where they're at. So I don't want the sports to throw everything out just because of that. I just think we have to be flexible. And I've talked to some people that live in Henrico and Richmond that have the tiers that we're talking about. And they said it's very, they, it's very beneficial for their middle and high school students. And so I just think the childcare is the thing we really need to put a lot of focus on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Ms. Hummel and Dr. Behrs, if you have any. Thank you.
Thanks, like everyone else, for all your work on this. I think as a first go-round, this is exactly what we wanted. We wanted to hear what all the concerns were. We wanted people, it's great when you look at the com, the comments and they actually, you know, here are my six issues and they lay them out for us. This is what we need, what we wanted and what we expected. So I wanted to thank the community for this and thank you for going through the qualitative issue of this instead of the quantitative, which is so much easier, yes, no. So in going with what Ms. Young was saying, I'm, I'm gathering that with the earlier elementary times, you've got more teachers that are going to be getting up earlier than high school teachers. Is that correct or am I wrong? Are there more elementary school staff than there are all the combined high school? I don't know, like I'm trying to get.
I'm direct to Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley, who probably know these numbers right off the top of their head generally. There's a significant number in both. I do know that.
I do know at the elementary level, we have roughly two hundred and forty K through five core teachers. I'm not quite sure how that compares to high school. I can't quote that number.
If you give me a minute, I can pull it up.
I don't even need it right now. I just, I'm saying, those are the, that's the kind of, when we're looking at the disruption and the change in people's schedules and how many people are affected, that's that kind of level. Like how many do we have, you know, twenty percent more staff that are going to be affected by this than they are right now? The same thing for the bus, the buses. I tend to think that maybe not as many high school students ride the bus. So maybe our bus runs for the high school is less maybe than all of the elementary school runs, even though they're shorter. I don't, I don't know. So that's the kind of, I think that's what Mrs. Young was maybe, is that what you were kind of getting at? Is that kind of for bus runs, for staffing?
Well, yeah, a lot of disruption. I, I do think there's going to be generally a lot of disruption anyway. I mean, you're changing your schedule, period. That's, that's disruptive.
It's absolutely accurate to say that everybody that within the division will be impacted by a change of this magnitude. I, I, I think that is a hundred percent accurate, that there will be, there will be shifts in how people go about their day-to-day process as a parent, as a staff member, as students. We will all feel that change.
And then I guess my other question is, since Richmond's already done this and I think Northern Virginia has already done this, is this conversation occurring with our neighboring Hampton Road schools right now? Are they all wrestling with this or, or not?
I think we've one or two schools in our area that already are there. A Hampton is like an eight twenty-five start.
Chesapeake's later at the secondary level. Chesapeake also has several different versions. I believe also Suffolk might be eight twenty or eight twenty-five at their high school level.
So it, it's a change that we're, we're seeing happening all across the state eventually. Is this what you're kind of seeing?
It's honestly hard to even suggest that because divisions larger than us have had this conversation and made no change. So there, we couldn't say there's a wave right now. We're part of it. That would not be correct. We're just coming to look at it as a, an organization because it's the conversation we wanted to have because it's good for students. There are probably more in our, in the peninsula who still have a timeframe that's similar to ours. I think that'll be a fair statement.
Current, the, the current schedule. Right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so then in my comment is more than a question is that I want to comment that I think all of us are tired. We are tired of what we have gone through in the last couple of years. We are in a reset mode of trying to recapture learning loss, trying to just get back into a sense of some kind of normalcy. And it, I think, may be a little more enerving than any other time to do a major, major change so quickly. So I also am in support, I'm in support honestly of, of eventually doing this change. I just, I see the value in being, in being very thoughtful and trying to look, look at all of the different scenarios and really take our time to do it so that we're, we're, we know it's going to be disruptive, but making it as logically disruptive as possible, if that makes sense. And then as far as the attendance zones, I don't know if any of you, I think a few of us were here, but when major redistricting went, went on many, many years ago, there was an, I, there was a map of the beautiful high school concentric circles for our three attendance zones. And it was beautiful and it would have been great for attendance, for buses and transportation. And it would have required ninety-seven percent of the students in this district to change their high schools one way or the other. And, and I remember you showing me this and saying.
Seven hundred students, yeah.
Seven hundred. I mean, and I remember that because it is ideal. It would have been a beautiful map. It would have been, and it would have been so incredibly disruptive for seven hundred students that we ultimately decided to go with attendance zones that are kind of quirky and weird. But we didn't want to put seven hundred students through that. So.
Once.
Once, I know, but whenever you talk about attendance zones, you're talking about major disruptions too. So I, I know.
Mrs. Hummel, if I could add to that, your comments about the time of change when you have the opportunity to, to really delve through the, the data we've provided to you just the last couple of days, you will notice that theme coming across. It's not pervasive, but it, it comes up every so often, like why now? We've just been through so much. This is not the time. And that, that is something that certainly struck me very heavily as I was reading the comments as well, to get the decision right, but the timing also right. And, and, and the gift of time is something certainly to consider. Having said that, I wouldn't want to have this on the agenda every other month and keep disruption going. It would be perhaps reasonable to gather what we can, get all the information, make a decision potentially if that's where we choose to go and then put the decision timeframe out rather than create a conversation that goes on for two years. Because that would be counterproductive, I believe in its own right. That's just my thinking. So we, we, we get the information. We gather more information. We come back and we really push a lot of our work up front and, and then come to a point that we say, this is what we're, we plan to do, but this is when, to give the time and the ability to do it well if we choose to go there. Just, just my, my thought process.
Thank you, Dr. Heron and Ms. Hummel. And Dr. Behrs, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I pretty much ditto everything that, that everybody has said. I, but I, and I also hope that eventually we do come up with a plan that does move starting time later for high school students, if we can get to that. But I, I, I want to thank staff for gathering all this information. And also thank the parents and students, teachers, whoever else responded online as well. Because it really, there were very specific comments. It really gives us an idea of, you know, where are the, you know, what, what people consider the greatest challenge is to do something like this. And, and I, I very much appreciated that. Question I had, Ms. Kiefer, you, you had said the challenge of getting more bus drivers. And my assumption is we're in the midst of that challenge right now. So my, I guess my question is, if we go forward with this, we, can we manage it with the number of bus drivers we have now? Or we're just really going to have to have more bus drivers? So that could ultimately, no pun intended, but that could ultimately be the main driver of what we're able to do.
Well, that's very well done, Dr. Kiefer.
It is.
One of the things, to, to, to your point and question, one of the things that we shared last spring from the Trans Finder report was that we needed to make some, some slight modifications to our twenty-two, twenty-three time schedule in order to maximize the drivers that we do have on staff.
That's right.
You know, adjusting for fluctuations that you hire three and lose one, hire four, lose two. That's been the recurring theme over the last several years. We feel like with the initial tiering structure that we provided to you in early October with a, with elementary first and, and then high school and then middle school, we can be, we can fluctuate on the actual start time as long as we have approximately forty-five minutes between tiers that we can accomplish that with the driving scenario as we currently have it. We always will want additional drivers because that would allow us to bring in some of the contracted services pieces. It would allow us to be even more efficient and to shorten routes. But we do feel like, given the current staffing scenario we're in, that we can accomplish the tiering structure that we provided for you last time.
And the only other thing I, I also agree. This is the beginning, I think, of a really good conversation that we're having with our, with students, parents, staff. And, and I want to see it continue on, but I also agree with the superintendent that we can't just talk about it for the next two years. That there has to come a point, a time when, when we make the decision, yea or nay. And I, I, I also support the notion, the idea that not twenty-three, twenty-four, but actually starting up in twenty-four, twenty-five. I, I, I just, I think it's too important. That's, that's, that gives us ample time to continue to tease out the data that we're looking at now. But, and then also ultimately making a decision. But I, I do think it, it gives, it gives parents more time. But I, I, but again, once, once a decision is made and, and it, it needs to be made, we still want there to be plenty of time for parents and staff to make whatever adjustments they need to do with their own schedules. And I just think adding another year to that is just going to make it, it'll be a little more palatable doing it that way, I think.
Thank you, Dr. Behrs. And Ms. Young gave me the look like she's got something additional.
Right. I, I appreciate Dr. Heron's comments. We had this discussion several years ago where we spent quite a few meetings talking about this. And I don't want to go through that again personally. I, I would prefer that we made a decision, yes or no. First of all, not to waste staff's time anymore if we're not going to do it. But second of all, because I think then, once a decision is made, then you can go forward. Or, and if it's not made, then you stop. And it's not fair, I think, to the community if we don't make a decision. And personally, I totally support the change. I think one of the things that came out of our last discussion that we had several years ago was the research is solid. We know that our adolescents need more sleep and they're not getting it. I think I've spoken to substitute teachers where, going to classrooms where our high school students are, if they're not asleep, they're having trouble staying awake. And would like to avoid that. I'd like them to be alert and ready to learn. So I do support that. And I, secondly, I agree completely with what Ms. Hundley said that I think the big stickler in this is childcare. From the comments that I read, you know, childcare, the cost of childcare. I mean, those are things that I think need to be addressed. And I do think rec, connect, and, and whisk once, if a decision is made, then they can start moving forward to that. I also like the idea of maybe moving it to twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So thank you, Behrs, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I think it's my turn. Okay. Before I get into my own comments, I do have a question really encapsulating this idea around twenty-four, twenty-five rather than twenty-three, twenty-four. It was never twenty-two, twenty-three, by the way, right? So twenty-four, twenty-five conversation. And that's been talked in circles right now with respect to providing a greater lead time for preparation for faculty, staff, parents, students. And then really responding to the question and the survey, the response from, from the survey, why now? So satisfying both of those, but I'm curious if there are any other advantages, benchmarks perhaps, as we approach twenty-four, twenty-five that maybe you could help us understand.
I would say that the more lead time you give folks to adjust to a particular shift or change, the better off it is, the more thinking that can be done about family schedules, the more thought can go into athletic schedules. Teachers can make determinations about how to best manage their own personal schedule and their work schedule. So the idea of a 24, 25 puts us in the neighborhood of about 18, 19 months. Assuming the decision is reached in the next couple of months, it gives folks a year and a half to plan for said change. And in my current, my current role right now in the community, my circumstance might change because of my students getting older, I might be concerned about the, so I think that things change and people have an opportunity to react to that. I do think it provides greater flexibility in scheduling of athletics and looking more specifically at the childcare components, some of which we can have dialogue about and help shape, and others of, that's a family scenario or a James C.D. County scenario. So the more lead time we give those agencies, I think the better off we are.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mr. Behrs.
Mr. Dutt, if I could add to that, it gives us the possibility of going back to TransFinder to do some deeper analysis to see if there are any other pathways forward that would help provide better times, both at the beginning and end of the day. So we would be able to perhaps use their resources to help us a little bit, to really make sure we can actually deliver what we decide upon.
Thank you for that. I've heard my board colleagues, and I don't think that I am overstepping, I think what I've heard is that the board would like the division, your staff, Dr. Heron, to continue to explore the feasibility of a tier shift that I think a majority of the board is more interested in a 24, 25 examination of a tier shift. And, Mr. Behrs, you just mentioned months to come to a decision, and I think that when that time does come, you've answered all the questions. We've heard from a greater representative population for schools and for those, for parents and for staff members, that you are able to craft a tier structure that best suits what we believe is feasible for that 24, 25 timeframe. I think that at that point, again, leading back to a part of our conversation two weeks ago, that this is fully administrative in nature, this decision, that we'll look at the information that you brought to us, and we'll be able to say, yes, we can support this, and this is how we're going to support it via resolution or any other mechanism. But ultimately, this will be your decision, Dr. Heron, and we appreciate that the work is continuing and the voices are being heard, and there are different avenues of understanding that are being approached and just continue to work. I think that's what this board is telling you this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Any, I feel like I, you know, we good there? Yes? Okay. All right. We'll move on to our board member comments, item 11. And if I can start with Ms. Ordigo, so I don't miss Dr. Behrs on the other end this time. Ms. Ordigo?
I don't have a bunch of additional comments, just want to thank all the speakers that came out tonight. We do enjoy hearing the diverse opinions from our community. And again, thank you to everyone who commented on this latest topic of the tier start times. And since we've all said a lot tonight, I won't belabor it.
Ms. Hundley?
Just want to remind families that tomorrow is Unity Day. Your child is supposed to wear orange. That, I think that includes high school as well, but I definitely know middle and elementary will be wearing orange tomorrow in support of being unified and no bullying on any level. And also, I just want to encourage anyone that's out there listening to encourage your friends to go back and watch this video. You can go to YouTube and mention today's date so that they can hear what we discussed and see what came up, because the misconceptions are, you know, they will take over. And they can go back and see, there is going to be middle school sports, because once one person says that, there's no middle school sports, everybody's turned off, they don't want to listen to anything else. So please encourage them to read it, or go back and look, and key words we are exploring, we're not changing this now, and there's a possibility of 24, 25. If anything, you can get that message out, that will bring down some of the anxiety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to echo my colleagues' thanks for all their speakers. We really do appreciate hearing from people. I particularly enjoy hearing from students when they come out. That's always a special treat, to hear what's on student minds. And then also, I just wanted to just clarify that we do have school psychologists on staff here at WJCC to work with and support students, but I don't know, Dr. Heron, if you could add clarifying, but they're not providing psychological counseling to students in the buildings. If you could just verify that.
No, ma'am, they are not.
Yeah, thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that that's not what's going on in our schools.
And parents would be involved if a student is having a service.
An assessment of any kind, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Hummel?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, this was just a beautiful school board in action tonight. I feel like you see differing opinions in our community comments, you see very involved parents, faculty and staff reaching out to us via the survey instrument to let us know their opinions and bringing good points, and then you, it's just, it's just been a very good kind of democracy and a good example of it tonight. So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you for all my colleagues, for the faculty, the staff, all the people that are doing all the work to move the division forward, because these initiatives take effort, they take effort to move us forward, and it's uncomfortable, and this is the way you go about it. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Young?
Yes, I get away everything my fellow board members have said. The one thing that I did want to comment on is the comments as I read them, I was impressed with the respectfulness, the thoughtfulness. You could tell that people were seriously contemplating a change and thinking about how it was going to, the things that they needed to think about in relationship to their own families. And so I appreciate that, and I appreciate especially the fact that there were so many, because so often we don't hear as much as we need to in order to support, in this case, superintendent's decision, and I think that's what I've heard, that's where we're at. We need to, it is an administrative decision, but I, as a board member, certainly want to be supporting her in the decisions that she makes. And thank you, and congratulations, Ms. Young, again. I saw her when she was getting ready to come up here, and she's going, oh, no, not again. But it's nice to know that we've got her on board, and thank you, Ms. Wall, for putting up with me not knowing your name. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Behrs?
Yeah, I agree with just...
We can't hear you, sir.
Yeah, that people have said, and I do want, once again, to recognize this, Mrs. Young, again, she's been with this system quite a few years, quite a few years before, and now, and thank God she came back. And we're really fortunate to have her, and so many outstanding people at Central Office, and we can't, we don't say enough about it, and it really is, it's an incredibly hardworking group. I very much appreciate, as I said earlier, the number of comments that parents, citizens, teachers and students submitted online. It is, as Mrs. Hummel, I agree with Mrs. Hummel, is that it's really, I don't want to say democracy at work, but it's really, it's a, it's a real show of how important it is to encourage parents, teachers and students to give us feedback and help direct us in what we're trying to do with this schedule. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Behrs.
My comments are really short. Just thank you to your staff and yourself, Dr. Heron, for doing the hard work when we set out initially in discussing how this might play out, especially with respect to garnering public information or just a public comment, I should say. It was said by someone that it might be tantamount to a redistricting kind of conversation, and I am really pleased with the 1,177 comments. I've not gotten through half of them, but to reiterate what Ms. Young identified, that they're, a majority, a vast majority are just respectful of the division and appreciative of your leadership, Dr. Heron, in putting this out in front of the public early so that they could weigh in. And so I appreciate that from this division's point of view, that that was important. That's really all I wanted to say. So thank you. We're going to move on to item 12, upcoming events. We've got a student advisory committee meeting on October 19th at 3:00 p.m. James Town High School Media Center, policy committee meeting on October 20th at 8:30 a.m. in room 108 of Central Office, and then New Horizons Tour, which unfortunately I will have to miss that, but that's going to be on November 4th at 12:30 at the New Horizons Regional Education Center in Newport, on Newport Academy, at the Newport Academy, excuse me, Newport News. 12 upcoming meetings, closed session, followed by the work session and action items on November 1st, 4:00, 4:30 respectively, at Central Office, closed session on November 15th, followed by a public hearing on the CIP on November 15th, 6:00 and 6:30, and then our regular meeting right after the public hearing for the CIP, both of those at the, right here in this gymnasium, James Clear. All right. With that, I want to thank everybody for being here, and for those of you that hung with us this long, thanks for being here as well. For those that provided public comment, we really do greatly appreciate that. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.